He said it feels hot in here.
It really feels hot in here. We're under the lights. Nice ploy. What's that? Seventy-two?
And I'm just wondering if we should, uh, call them, or are you ready? Oh, sorry. All right, we'll go ahead and call our July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting to order at three oh one P M. If we get a roll call.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh.
Yeah, there was gone this morning.
Flag is gone. It's over in the community center.
There's a flag over in the center. I'll, I'll go get it.
Pull one up with my phone.
There's, there's one right here.
It's in the community center. We pulled it for Kwanis yesterday. You guys didn't put your stuff back when you're done with it?
No, we didn't.
Forgot.
Okay, cause otherwise. I was gonna be like.
There you go.
All right, are you ready? Yeah, all right, we're good. I'll click it out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So item four is the budget considerations. Item A is Idaho Suicide Prevention from Director Lee Flynn. Doesn't look like they are here right now. So what we'll do is we'll go on and move on to item five A. Executive Mayor Pierce and Tracy Osborne, the executive budget. All right, we'll go back to item four A. So we'll actually hear the budget from the Idaho Suicide Prevention. Director Lynn. Lynn, if you're ready, yep. Do you? I don't know if you had anything you want to put on the computer or anything?
I sent an email earlier today, but I have hard copies too. May I give those to you?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. All right. Do, would you like?
Yeah, you, yeah, you can swap and give it to us and then if you have one copy for the clerk.
There's too many copies.
Okay. Oh, actually, I think we have these already.
Okay. What I emailed earlier? Okay. All right.
And it's on video right here, on the screen.
Oh, okay. That's very.
This one, I'm saying like it's closer. No, right here.
Okay, oh, you want me to?
Go talk over it if you want to, yeah. It's okay. So yeah, it's, it's here, so if you want to.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. That way we can see what you're seeing, so.
Right. Super fancy, I would say, too. All right, well, thank you for inviting me back. My name is Lee Flynn and I am the Director of Idaho Crisis and Suicide Hotline. I, I think this is my third time being, having the pleasure of presenting to you. And even since last year, a lot has changed. So I'm not going to go through every, I'm not going to walk you through the handout, but I do want to just touch on the things that are at the beginning of the handout and really give you an update on what has changed and then give you time to ask any questions that you might have. I, the first thing I would say is we did, since I, since I was here last August, we did do an update on our name previously. This is our tenth year, tenth anniversary is later this year. And we, in March, updated our name from Idaho Suicide Prevention Hotline to Idaho Crisis and Suicide Hotline. The reason for that is twofold. I think I mentioned this when I was here before, that on any given day, since the first day the phone started ringing, we have always functioned as a crisis helpline. And that means that we get calls and texts from people in various forms of crisis. And a, and a lot of the time, it is someone feeling suicidal, but not every time. And so we, we ha, we seem to regularly get calls from people in severe emotional distress that would say something like, you know, I'm not suicidal, can I still talk to you? And so that was one reason, to really match the work that we were doing. And then the other reason is that we knew that nine eight eight was coming and that nine eight eight was going to be marketed as a mental health and suicide prevention crisis number. So we felt like, we had kind of, we'd kind of thought about updating our name and then the time was right, so we went ahead and did that. So there's that. This, this isn't on my list, but I would tell you that since we met last in anticipation of nine eight eight going live, which it did go live on Saturday, the sixteenth of July, the hotline has moved to a new location. We, we were just really cramped at our former location, so we have a new office that we moved to in January. We've expanded our staff to increase the number of crisis responders that we have answering the phones and, you know, have really just been pushing forward, building capacity and putting in place just a variety of quality improvement plans. Because we know how we function now and the amount of calls we're able, calls and texts where, where we are able to respond to is good. And, and we also know that with nine eight eight, over time, our volume is going to increase significantly. I would say, you know, we're only a few days into it, for what, three, three days? And over the weekend, you know, we weren't, we weren't sure what to expect. And I would say that over the weekend with nine eight eight going live, we had a little bit of a normal weekend, you know, maybe a slight uptick, but we didn't get, you know, we didn't get hit with a tidal wave of calls. And that's kind of what we expected. I mean, we really do think that nine eight eight, you know, was, was set up to be the mental health equivalent of nine one one. And although I was very young when nine one one enrolled in this country, I, you know, I know from what I've read and from talking to people that it didn't, you know, it wasn't automatic. People didn't automatically know that when your house is on fire or somebody's breaking in, that you call nine one one. So everyone anticipates that nine eight eight will be some, somewhat similar. It will grow over time. And hopefully, you know, at some point in the future, we will reach a point in Idaho where literally everyone will know what nine eight eight is. So, couple updates there.
I think you could probably also equate it to something even newer, which is two one one, which we have here in Idaho. So it'll kind of fit the same bill.
Yes, that's, yes, that is a good, that is also a good comparison, right. So I won't go over, you know, it's, it's on the sheet about what nine eight eight is as far as the number. Whoops, sorry. I would say, just for clarification, I mentioned that we changed our name and also we are a member of the national, what was, what was previously referred to as the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. They changed their name, and you can see the blue nine eight eight logo. They changed their name to nine eight eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Same thing, calls are routed through them. When someone calls nine eight eight with an Idaho area code, those calls are routed to our call center. It was hoped by many people in the field that geolocation would be part of nine eight eight. And at this point, that technology is not in place. Hopefully, I, I hope next year, if I can present to you, I hope I have a different update on that front. But for right now, that's how calls are routed. It's not ideal, but I would say, you know, when someone calls nine eight eight and say they have a California area code or a Washington area code or what have you, they will still reach a trained crisis responder, it just won't be in Idaho. They'll be connected with the, with whatever crisis center is in, affiliated with that area code, if that makes sense. So they will reach someone, they won't reach us if they don't have an Idaho area code. So I think the last thing I wanted to say about nine eight eight is it really is part of what Idaho is referring to as a crisis care continuum. You know, nine eight eight is literally a three-digit number, but it's much, much more than that. It's intended to be much, much more than that. Right now, the state of Idaho is moving forward towards managed care for Medicaid and they're also moving to managed care system for crisis care. And I won't get into the weeds about that. But I would say that what that means is that a year from now, the crisis care system of which the hotline is part of will look much different and will look better. It will be the beginning of a more coordinated system. As it is right now, when someone calls us, you know, our crisis responders work with that person to help them de-escalate and help them stay safe. If, in some situations, they, the person may need more support than we are able to offer through a phone call. And so, you know, kind of the next step, depending on where the person lives, but say, suppose they live in Eagle, then the next step would be if the person really wants more support, you know, we could refer to Pathways Crisis Center or we could work with, as we do closely now, we could work with the mobile crisis teams. You know, so there are various, various options. But that said, you know, if we make a referral to a, to a crisis center, say Pathways, we don't really have any, there's not a formal communication between all of the crisis care entities. So it's easy for a person to fall through the cracks because we don't know, did that person make it to the crisis center? So again, it will be more coordinated a year from now when crisis care starts to move into a managed care type of setup. I would say, the last thing I would say, and then I, then I will stop and be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But I did want to refer you to some of the Eagle-specific data that we've collected for the past year, for our fiscal year, which is July first through June thirtieth. And we, I, I've mentioned this before, but I'll also say it again, that when we, when our crisis responders get a call or a text, we always, at some point during that interaction, we always try to collect basic demographic information because it really helps us know who we're serving. And, and because it's crisis call, we, we aren't always able to get that information. And sometimes we don't try. If the person is in danger, we are not going to ask them questions about where do they live or do they have insurance or, you know, anything like that. So the data that you have in front of you is what we were able to collect from people. Again, I mentioned if a person's in crisis, you know, they don't, they can't always say, and we don't ask them. The flip side of that, which I think we can all understand, is privacy issues. You know, sometimes people just don't want to tell us that and we let them decide how much they want to tell us or not. That said, any kind of data, whether we cut it by county or city or age or anything else, is always prone to being undercounted because we don't, we're, we're not able to get demographic information for, from everyone. But that said, so Eagle contacts during this time period were eighty-six. Mostly call, well, a little bit more calls than texts. And twenty-seven people called on behalf of themselves and six called on behalf of concern from somebody, for, for another person. Out of that, out of those that called us, that we were able to collect the information from, forty-seven percent were between the ages of fifteen and nineteen for that particular snapshot in time. And then, you know, below, right below that, there's three bullet points about primary reasons that Eagle residents reached out to the hotline. This is not just Eagle-specific. This is, no matter how, no matter what area we look at or whether we look at data from the entire state, it almost oil, always boils down like this, that a large, large group, large number of people reach out to the hotline because they have mental health concerns. The second most, the second biggest reason is suicide. And I would say sometimes we see more people reaching out for suicide and, you know, and then mental health will be the second. But those, those two are always the first reason and the second reason, sometimes they change order. And then another very common issue, and we, we again, don't see this, we see this across geographic areas, is people reaching out because of relationship issues. And that could be a divorce, a breakup, any kind of family turmoil. It's an incredibly common reason that people reach out. So I will, I, I probably have gone over time. I will stop there and I would be, I'd sure be happy to try to answer any questions you, you might have.
Council members, any questions? Councilman Pike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lee, thanks for your presentation again. What is the national campaign and how is it going to be funded? Because nine one one came out in nineteen sixty-eight, I was ten years old, so I only, I only remember from school as it went on. But there was a big push in public safety for the next few decades, all over advertising on everything. And so how is nationally, what's, what's the funding element and what's the cost for Eagle?
I'm really glad you, you asked that because I would have forgotten to mention it. Similarly, I was quite young when nine one one, I think I was around kindergarten or first, I was around kindergarten age, so I don't really remember it.
I'm older than you, go ahead and say it.
So, um, but I, I would say I was young enough that I just, it seems like I always knew about nine one one. So for nine eight eight, as it is right now, we received, we and all the other crisis call lines found out earlier this year, I would say, I don't know, it seems like about February or March I heard this news, that the federal government and some of the national organizations like the nine eight eight Lifeline and the SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, are not going to do a national marketing campaign this year. And as I've told different people that, including, you know, some of the suicide prevention advocates, everybody's really alarmed. The reason is they're going to, you know, really keep their powder dry and not do a, a national marketing campaign. And the reason for that, as, as I heard from several different webinars I was on, is because states are in various state, were in various stages of being prepared. And so SAMSA, the nine eight eight Lifeline, they didn't want to, you know, just do a huge marketing campaign, blast it to every state and then have a crisis call center that wasn't ready for that kind of visibility. And so that's my understanding for the rest of this calendar year. I don't know what it's going to look like for twenty twenty-three, but would anticipate by next year that there would be a marketing campaign by the federal government. And I believe it would be headed up by SAMSA, the federal agency. In Idaho, the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare will be doing a marketing campaign. And that is, I, I just was on a meeting about an hour ago and that is in the works. They're, they're almost ready to finalize it as far as having, you know, video and they're going to be doing some social media marketing and so forth. And so that, there should start, or there should be in full swing by the end of this month. And so at this point, I guess that's my long way of saying I don't anticipate that this will cost cities anything, but the Department of Health and Welfare will be pushing a marketing campaign. And the hotline will be doing, will be doing, you know, some things on social media as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, there should be a lot of marketing, so.
Yeah, I would hope so, right? Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman McGinnis, sir?
Lee, I just had a question for you in regards to texting and for the web chat. Does that initiate the call or can they do their entire conversation through those two methods?
Yes, thank you for that. When a person reaches out via text or chat, that initiates the call or the, the contact, that initiates the, the conversation and then it stays in a text or a chat. So, and we're seeing, we're starting to see more texts. And I anticipate that that would only increase especially with younger people. But at this point, and it was the same last year when I was here, you know, I'll be curious to see what it is this time next year. But we still, at the hotline, we still overwhelmingly, people reach out by phone. And the only, I, I don't know if that's kind of similar with other states or not, but the only thing that I can think of is that I think sometimes a person in emotional distress or someone feeling suicidal, that there's some comfort with hearing a person's voice. That's my speculation, but we do receive most of our contacts via phone call.
And Mr. Mayor, follow up. What is the qualifications of those that are receiving the phone calls and the, and the text messages? Are they licensed counselors? Are they trained through your system or what's the?
Yes.
Method for that, both?
So the, the crisis responders are trained individuals, they are not clinicians. And in, I, I think in most states, they are not trained clinicians. And when I say clinician, what I specifically mean is they are not masters-level social workers, counselors that hold a clinical license with the state of Idaho. It's my understanding that I don't think, I, I don't want to say that there are no, no states that go that direction, but I think most states do not set the bar at that point because it's a, it's an expensive staffing model and it's also, in this hiring environment, also very difficult. So our crisis responders, we have a hybrid model right now. The hotline, when we launched ten years ago, we had trained volunteers answering all of the calls and we operated with only volunteers for about the first eight, little over eight years. Now we're entering our tenth year and we have a combination of employees that do crisis response and then we also have volunteers that do crisis response. The training is the same for both. We initially have everyone go through a two-day, specifically suicide prevention and crisis intervention training called ASSIST. And then after that, we require various training modules. We used to do this all in person and then, of course, with COVID, we adapted like everyone. But right now, our training requirement is forty hours minimum. And so we, we give people all the training, we do group role plays, you know, to really make sure that a person is ready to be on the phones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, unless I missed it here, I was going to ask, what was the ask for this year?
Well, that's a softball, isn't it?
I don't know. Find out, might be the toughest question you got all night.
Okay, well, in, in the past, the city has been very generous in investing ten thousand dollars in the hotline. And so I would leave it to you all, but I can tell you that ten thousand dollars is a, is a very meaningful donation to us and we can make that go very far in helping to cover our operating costs. You know, if you ever wanted to increase that, we would not oppose. But, but I just want you to truly know that that is a very generous investment in our work and we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Nope, all right, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, and if you have, if you think of any questions later today or next week, my email is on that sheet and my phone number, so feel free to reach out anytime. And I, I've been having a lot of people ask today and yesterday about, like, wallet cards with the number on it and everything. And so we will have those soon and I'll just make a point of getting some to the city so you can, you know, distribute as you see fit, if that would be helpful.
And my guess is you're going to have some kind of, like you said, some social media stuff because?
That is correct.
Get with our PIO and make sure that that goes out through our social media stuff too, to help.
Yeah.
Great, excellent.
All right, thank you very much, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to item five A, Executive Mayor Pierce and Tracy Osborne budget.
I am neither of you.
Oh, all right. I just, I just read the agenda.
No, I'm just moving.
And she's walking out. All right, so we'll, what we did, just so you guys know, is we, we won't have any, my gosh, I just drew a total blank. Economic Development Budget this year. We rolled that in because of the fact that Robin will be leaving. We are going to allow Katie to do what we think economic development will probably fulfill us for the next few years. And so, or a position of that. So we rolled that into the executive budget. She'll be supervised by me in making sure those things are being done. We also increased, the other big increase was the, uh, comp plan. I think through the discussions that we've had, we want to kind of move that a little faster. Probably don't have as much in-house staff to be able to do that. So by upping that, it allows us to hire more outside help for Nicole or even if we, you know, that would probably be the route we'd go because it's a one-time thing, not having to actually bring staff in for that, so. So those were the two big items. Was there anything, you guys had any questions on?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one, community staff relations, what exactly is that five thousand dollars for? Because it went up two thousand dollars.
Right, so it's just getting information out to the community. So obviously, it was some stuff that was in the economic development budget also. So that's why we upped it. Some of the things that we upped, we did because they were coming out of how you work with the community and the staff gets stuff out to the public.
So it's, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
But it's on your budget, so do you, are you going to be, is that something like you do your coffees and stuff like that or is this?
Yep, does the coffees, it does, you know, getting, like I said, getting information out to the, the residents of what we're doing in the community. And that happens both on the economic development side and it happens on there. Because these are, the budget, the whole budget is my budget.
Right.
There's nothing separate from.
And further on, I know you've, and you've, you relayed this to me earlier, but again, we're going to eliminate the economic developers' position and this offsets an increase for Katie's new position, the increase, or does she have her normal salary and then we're going to augment it with a little bit or where's it going with?
No, her, her salary is going to, at this point, we don't have anything in there to raise it except for the six percent that we approved.
Yeah, so this, but it says it's all going, increased for economic development.
Right, because we had, so the reason that those line items increased is because we moved this stuff over from economic development onto this budget.
No, I get it, but where's it, where's it going? Is this going to sit, sit in a, in a funding source? Where, where's the, the money that Robin, we had for Robin's position, where's, where's that going?
Well, we have zero-based budgeting, so we go back to zero, so we just don't have that hundred thousand dollars in, in the budget anymore.
Okay, because the, I'm sorry, then the increase for economic development, I, it looked like those, in the notes, just from what I read, it looked like those funds that were going, all just increasing in your budget from the funds, from her position.
Correct, so the increase in mine, there, so some of the increase of that is economic development because Katie's salary is going into my budget now, since we don't have economic development. Other is from the six percent increase.
Right.
And anticipated increases.
But she's already getting paid, so where did her initial pay go from? From?
From the economic development budget.
Yeah.
Came out of the economic development budget. Came over to my budget, because we won't have one for economic development. And then there will be, there's nothing for a director position.
Correct. I just, I'm looking, okay, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm just trying to ask for, is there a net difference between what was, if we still had an economic directors' position, the budget would be X. The executive budget would be X. That's X plus X. Right now, it's just your budget only.
Right.
So all of the residuals from the executive directors that, that were not brought over into your budget just go into the general budget and redistributed.
Just in the zero fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So there's probably about a hundred thousand dollar savings by not having that position. But all the other stuff had to come over, right? All the material we do, all that. That's why mine has the increase that it does. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
So relative to, I guess, salaries and stuff like that, one, we, we have the comp plan, kind of identified with additional funds. One of the things I think we identified going through this process with Nicole and several others, so not just the comp plan, but we have several other plans, a lot of stuff. Are we looking at? Are we looking at, is there any additions in here outside of just the comp plan relative to increasing capacity? Because right now, that's been coming up time and time again, is this ability to do?
So another thing in the salary increase was another person.
So that's a full-time person for?
To work, to work for whatever, if I need them to work something with Katie, if I need them to work something with Nicole, if I need them to do something for me, so on and so forth.
So it's a general person, not just like, so we don't have a new, I'm gonna just say planner, it's a generalist?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Mayor, follow up, relative to that one, can we, and this is one, can we address the capacity issues with just a general position or do we need a specialist? And then that one is, can we offset that with, similar to the comp plan rewrite or some of the other ones? So, I mean, if we have a, I guess I'd like to see a list, because relative to the stuff that Nicole falls under you. So relative to the list of projects and stuff that Nicole is directly and indirectly attached to, is significant. Will we be able to address that with this person or will we need to look at additional?
Well, so we have a couple of things that we're looking at. We have, now that we're bringing Katie in and what, how that changes, we're looking at how that job might morph or not as it moves forward. We're also doing the study through the Ameribin to re, you know, she's an economic development specialist right now. And she's not the director, but she's more than a specialist. So how do we figure that and rate that, so we're figuring that? And where she could maybe be able to help in the sense of what Nicole does. And then we're also looking at hiring someone else to bring in. And we've got that set, I don't remember off the top of my head, I'd have to look, but at a rate that would be able to bring someone on and help in more of a general sense. And then we've got, with the, the comp plan is a huge part of it. And we added, you know, $70,000 to that. So, I mean, that's a big chunk of change. And we didn't spend any of the 80 from last year, so having $150,000 next year is almost equivalent to employees. And that could be hiring, outsourcing. And it could also go, we decide, hey, you know, we need to get to a point where we need to hire someone in-house. So they could come in and come out of that fund also. But it's for the comp plan.
Okay.
So we wanted to specifically set that aside for that.
Okay, I just, yeah, at some point, just based on, because that's the one I'm most familiar with, with you guys, is basically all the list of stuff that, we're working on that one. And at some point, it'd be nice to, and we can do this, we kind of talked about it a little bit, but go through there, identify the list of all the projects and really, based on capacity, say, hey, we can do about 10 of these and these residual 20, we need to drop them. Or?
Move.
Move.
Knowing they're gonna happen in year?
Exactly, because we, I mean, I think we've done, over the last two-plus years, we've done a lot of things and we've been asking a lot of staff. And so I think we're reaching that point now where we need to, I think, just do that, is start going through and saying, here's the list of everything, here's what capacity says, yep.
Yep, excellent, thanks. Okay, any other questions? All right. Then we will move on to the next one. 5B, Recreation Department, Special Events, Eagle Fund Days and Arts Commission. Mr. Allen?
Mayor, Council? I've got a few different budgets to go over. First one we'll start with is the Eagle Arts Commission. And it has pretty much stayed the same. There were a few decreases that they saw historically could be made. One of the line items went from 1,500 down to 100 because it was for gallery maintenance and it just wasn't being utilized. And another one was administration went from 8,000 down to 1,500 as they weren't utilizing it. And they were going to use it more appropriately in areas they felt necessary, like advocacy and different things like that. Other than that, it's pretty much stayed the same. So with that, are there any questions about the Eagle Arts Commission?
No.
So another question I have is, we show a 14% to this point of expenditures from the Art Commission.
Correct.
And just wondering, you know, they're asking for the same, is it just, are they planning, was last year just a slow year? Because they were trying to get through some bigger projects and didn't get through them, or?
From my understanding, because I'm fairly new to, well, new to this entire process, the last three years, they have not spent about $30,000 plus of their budget. I think every year, they try, they try to come to consensus of what they want to do. And I think they're hoping to be able to do more in the coming year, which is why they left it pretty flat.
Yeah, I saw that, you know, they're obviously being good and conservative with the money and making sure they do good projects and not just spending it because it's there, which I appreciate. I was, this year was obviously really, really low at 10,000, almost $11,000, so.
And I do know they're working on projects right now, they were trying to get done before the end of the fiscal year. They have a meeting tonight, we'll see what is voted on at that point to see if they can get their idea through before the end of September, so.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right, excellent, thank you. One down.
Recreation.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I'm gonna jump back. Real quick, relative to the arts, just because the fact is, we're now seeing a trend at three years. Could we basically keep, I'd like to keep budget, I guess, where it's at right now with a nice asterisk saying, if at such time, we are now at, four years is definitely a trend. At such time after this one, maybe a little boot to, again, use the funds. But if you're not gonna continue with funds, start dropping the budget. Because it's basically, it's in all reality, potentially taking money away from something else that can't be done, so.
Well, I don't know if we, do we want to really put an asterisk? I mean, we have a decision to make that right now if we wanted to.
No, no, that's, I'm just.
Or in the future, so maybe it's just, you know, at the next meeting, maybe if you give that information to them just to say, hey, you know, just so you know, the council was a little worried about the trend we're seeing and, you know, would like to see you, you know, do some projects in the community. And I think one of the things, I think the Art Commission might have, and I know it was before you were here, they kind of, I think, had more of an understanding that they would be able to carry money over to do bigger things as they went along. And we just don't do our budgeting that way. And I think they've kind of grasped that over the last little bit. It's not being done that way, so.
Well, and that one, then wouldn't it be, based on that, would be, that would fall into capital improvement project? I mean, if it's gonna be that big, it'd almost fall into the CIP similar to, so I'd almost have them. If it was gonna be something like that, and that may be something, just talking with the Arts Commission about, if we want to do a big project, that needs to be included in the CIP with the maintenance and everything. So we can do that, if there's smaller projects, I mean, I guess that would be the big one. So, no, the asterisk is more of a, kind of a, just a nudge, it's like, hey, if you're in a, let's start using something, use it or lose it type thing.
Okay, great.
All right, the next one, the Recreation's budget is broken down into three separate, as you can see. The first one is Recreation Special Events. And there weren't any major increases or decreases. There were, as I went through it, as I said, this is my first time going through the budget. There were some redundancies, same line items for different things. We tried to combine them so as to not have it so redundant. And one of the line items decreased from 8,000 to zero only because it was the same as another. And we tried to combine it into one line item for, I think it was equipment rentals or something like that. There was an increase for the Christmas market and the gazebo concert series only because we're seeing a cost increase in vendors and different items, different things like that. So those have increased, but other than that, it's pretty well stayed the same for special events.
Any questions?
I do have one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Brian, thanks for giving us this. You're gonna be the springboard to one of my concerns, I brought it up last week, but it's in terms of uniforms and what are mandated, and we don't have a, through the mayor, we didn't have a mandate for uniforms. But last year and this year, we show $15,000 for uniforms for you in the Recreation Department. And a couple of years ago, it was 2,800. And then last, and a couple of years, then it went to 25. And anyhow, I know the price of shirts, T-shirts and uniforms. What, can you give me a more specific reason for the 15,000 for Recreation? Is it T-shirts for events, is it, you know, what is it?
Is, well, we have a couple of different, we have Recreation Special Events and then in the Recreation, which is sports camps and classes, I believe is the line item you're looking at. Those were uniforms for the teams. And we have a cost recovery mechanism in place where they pay. So the uniforms are to buy the team uniforms and which the families do pay for. That's why with the increased number of participants, the number's at where it's at. Because we spend most of that, but recover it as well.
Okay, so is that across the board though, with employees and people, kids participating in events?
That.
Because it says uniforms, I'm assuming that's the whole Recreation Department's cost for uniforms for the year.
That's just for the sports program, uniforms, that's not employee, that's uniforms for the players.
Okay, and then when the cost, the cost we get back for members, you know, paying for the stuff, what is, what's the allocation for to support the 15,000? Where do we, do we have a deficit with that usually, or do we get the money back?
We get the money back.
All of it?
Yes, and I think there's, we get the money back plus, I don't remember what the percentage was, but we get all of the money back.
Okay, so your department.
Real quick, we, under revenues, under registration, there's $188,000 that comes in in registration fees for the camps and classes, so that.
The reason I'm asking this, Mr. Mayor, is that the line item is for uniforms and it goes across every department. So I'm gonna be a little stickler on this uniform thing for a few minutes, but that's just, Brian, you're the first I asked last week about this. Because we're up to $31,780 so far in uniforms with the combined from everybody in all the departments. And I think we can do better than that, so Brian just gets the first hit.
Okay, so maybe then what we need to do is go through all the budgets, Kelly, and differentiate, like, this should say team, team uniforms or something. You know, staff apparel or whatever, or staff uniforms or whatever it is, so we can break it out, so it's easier to.
Yeah, because right now, it looks like every department has uniforms.
Well, they do, but, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm looking at Recreation spending $15,000 on uniforms.
Yep, but it's not.
Well, we need to specify then.
You want that, we'll do that.
Yeah. Thanks, that was, I was just, that was just, you just happened to be the first one that.
No, that's fine.
I saw the big number and that's, I've been looking through the books, so, yeah, thanks.
Anything else on Special Events?
No? Okay.
Then we'll move to Recreation, which is the sports camps and classes. There have been some changes here in that we're trying to increase the programs with camps and classes. This year, for example, our summer camp was capped at 50 people. And we believe with, with the staff that we're hoping to get and more seasonal staff, we can increase that number. There were weeks this year where 50 was manageable and they actually upped it to 60 and were able to do it. So that's where some of the increase comes from, is we're looking to increase the number of allowed participants. Also, an increase for camps and classes comes because our camps and classes coordinator next summer would like to re-implement the adventure program they had at one point for the, the students are a little bit older. They haven't had that because of staffing issues and COVID and whatnot. So with COVID hopefully behind us, a lot of the programs, we're hoping to bring back some programs and increase our programs availability. And with the new addition to City Hall, gives us more space to do the same thing. So there has been increases there. Uniforms was one of the things I was actually going to talk about, because the uniforms, we do have cost recovery and that was strictly for the sports program, uniforms for the players. We saw quite a major decrease in one of our events, which was Glow in the Park. From my understanding, the 15,000 that was in there prior, 15,500 was an estimate of what someone felt that event would cost to put on. And we've decreased it to 6,000, 15,000 was way too much for an event of that nature. So that's where that major decrease in that line item comes from. We did see an increase with our camps program for transportation services and the field trips line items as the cost of fuel goes up. Once a week, the camps take a field trip. And so they increased that budget just to offset the rising increase in transportation. So that's where those increases come from. And other than that, I think for the most part, it's pretty much stayed the same. I'm sure in the years to come, we'll see changes with camps and classes as we're able to kind of rebuild the program and have the space now to do it, so.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mr. Mayor. So Brian on this one, and it's also gonna incorporate the Special Events, so I can just.
Sure.
Overall, the Recreation Program, one of the biggest things we've talked about historically, is basically that cost recovery. Do you, have you put together, basically when we put it like this, it's with the uniforms and everything else, it's really tough to identify, but one in the future, but right now, do you have a, what is the cost percentage or cost recovery percentage that you guys are up to as of now? I know we've been, the long-term, we're looking at 80% cost recovery.
Right.
I think we're down around 20. And we've been making, what are we currently now for the entire Recreation Department?
For the whole department, I don't know for the whole department. I know specifically at camps and classes, if we don't look at salaries, which I know we need to take into account, we're already over the 80/20 with the cost recovery for the sports programs. Camps and classes, I'm not sure where we're at because they haven't had hardly anything. We did spring break camp and now summer camp. There is a cost recovery there as people do pay to go to those programs. I know we're shooting for the 80/20. I don't know as a whole where the department sits at that. I know that we're increasing it and have spoken with staff on ways that we can get closer to that 80/20 cost recovery.
So when we took office, it was about 12%, 13%?
Right.
And then last year, I think it was almost 25%.
Right.
And so it's been going up, but Brian's been in the position for five months.
80% increase, I mean, that's, won't happen overnight, but we see it incrementally taking place, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, so Brian on that one, I just, since we have identified that, like when we do the report potentially for next year or whatever, or if we can do it later in the year, is just so we can identify that and maybe show trend over time?
Sure.
So we can show, and you know, basically in 2020, we are at 12%. In 2021, we are at 22% and 23%. So we can actually show that, where we're going with that over time. And then that'll help also taking a lot of the, not only direct costs but indirect costs, like the uniforms. Whereas it's hard, we can lump that all up in one and summarize and say, hey, the program as a whole, including, that's where, and we'll have to specify that, but including salaries. Because I think, you know, we're looking at a net, what's the net product of that as opposed to, you know, the gross product? But including salaries and stuff like that, if we can actually show that this program, among others, is self-sustaining, that helps a lot.
Sure.
Especially for future funding.
No, easy enough.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One quick question. Thank you, Brian, for being here. Do you ever compare what the library is doing versus what Parks and Rec is doing in terms of individual classes that they put on and to make sure there's no redundancy? Or which would be a better fit for you versus them?
We have, we've looked at the difference only because we don't have hardly any classes right now. And we were looking to see what we can do and not duplicate what they're already doing. So right now, we're in the process of accepting applications from instructors who have classes they would like to teach and whatnot. But yeah, we're trying not to duplicate what they're already doing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Eagle Fund Days?
Eagle Fund Days. There have been some changes to Eagle Fund Days, same thing, trying to clean up different line items as there were some redundancies in there as well. There's one line item that, it was for Fund Days contracts, it was at 10,000, it's increased to 42,000. However, that's just combining all of the different contracts that were in there, they were all separated by line item. And we've combined them into one, there was firework contracts and Fund Days contracts, cornhole tournament contracts, so that's why there's an increase there. It was, it was getting them into one line item for that, those specific contracts. Which would also show zeroed out for different things like music contracts, it'll show those line items as being zeroed out. The Fund Days advertising has increased, whereas the other budgets, it's decreased. Um, as we move into more, uh, digital marketing and social media, it really offsets the cost of marketing. But for Eagle Fund Days, it's a little bit different because we print more posters, we're trying to get into the, into radio more. Um, there is more actual cost, um, associated with Eagle Fund Days, particularly with advertising. So that's why there was an increase in the line item there. Um, there was a couple of different supply, supplies line items, we tried to combine with zeroed out other line items. Um, there was also a line item in there for seventeen thousand dollars, which decreased to a thousand and having never seen these before and speaking with staff, that seventeen thousand was originally put in place for feeding staff during Eagle Fund Days. Um, that's what that was, that's why it's been decreased to a thousand. We did supply food for staff in the, in the new kitchen here, uh, as their long hot days. Uh, so that why, that's why there was that major decrease on that line item. I didn't see our staff eating seventeen thousand dollars worth of food during Eagle Fund Days, so. Other than that, there's not a lot of difference. If there's questions about Eagle Fund Days?
I have one.
Yep.
Uh, Mister Mayor, um, Brian, do you know the history of Eagle Fund Days and where it came from and when it was switched? By chance, has anybody ever given you that historical?
I've heard, yeah, I've heard a lot of different people give me the history of Eagle Fund Days itself and some of the, um, entities that are within Eagle Fund Days. Um, I couldn't regurgitate all of that history.
So you know where it originated from?
No.
The Fire District.
That's what I heard, I didn't know that was all the thing, Eagle Fund Days or just the Rocky Mountain Oyster Feed, so.
No, it was the complete thing with the water fight and turned into a water thing and feed and everything. So, uh, I was just curious is when the partnership changed and from, from the city's perspective? And, cause the cost, it's still a pretty big cost for, to put on this event, it's very popular. But, um, quite frankly, without the fire engines and getting everybody wet, it'd be a different feel for that. And I just didn't know where the separation got taken, so if anybody has that history, I'm all ears.
Mister Mayor. Uh, it started off as a fundraiser for the Fire District, when the Fire District got a different funding source, it just.
Right.
It became just a festival, it's a thing over time. Um, there's a, if you look throughout all of Idaho, almost every single one of the Fire Districts has an annual event like Genesee Crab Feed. I mean, all of them and they're all Fire Districts, that's how they fund themselves. Uh, when we got state funding is when those, and then most of the communities just adopted those, just like Eagle did. So there was no real transition or it was just over time, they got a different funding source, but the community went, uh, we really like this and wanna continue it, and so we did. So there was no real general separation.
In my point, I just wanna make sure the history is, is accurate from the information I've acquired, so. Because of the cost, I mean, that's kinda what I'm after.
And one of the goals moving forward with Eagle Fund Days, I don't see any reason why we can't get sponsorships for most of the different elements of Eagle Fund Days.
Right.
Um, also have more people come in, like, we, we have hired a contractor to do the parade. And I see different portions of Eagle Fund Days where we can do the same, um, with outside producers or promoters to come in and help us out. So it's not just our staff trying to put, cause it's a big event, which I had never seen until this past year. Um, so I do have ideas of how we can, um, save on costs, recover costs and have sponsorships, title sponsorships and sponsorships for the separate events that take place on those two days, so.
Excellent.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Vaughn.
Uh, so Brian, I would brought the same thing, the cost recovery percentage, um, would be a good thing to incorporate in the report, just to show trend over time. Um, most of that is to show that if you can do those cost recovery components. Um, and if I'm looking at two different programs, one program pays for itself and brings in outside and the other one is just a program that, eh, requires general funding. I'm gonna, the more sustainable one is gonna stick around probably.
Sure.
So, it's just with this one in particular, and I think you're spot on with the sponsors. Um, I think we moved that quite a bit and that is gonna reduce that total, you know, ninety thousand dollars out of the.
Sure.
City budget.
Excellent.
Any questions about Eagle Fund Days or any other recreation?
Anything else? Nope, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the I- IT Department.
Mister Mayor, I don't have.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Council, um, Devonte Goodman, uh, Director of IT for the City of Eagle for the record, um.
Devonte, real quick.
Yes.
I don't have any information, uh, in my packet for IT.
Ooh.
I don't know if anybody else does.
It was in the stuff you handed us. It was here when we came out.
It's the stuff in. Okay, hang on a minute, hang on a minute, Kelly. Parks impact.
It was just a single and all the stuff that was put on our desks.
Pathway impact. Yeah, I don't have that.
Funny, but the ladies have it.
Wait a minute. They're smarter.
I have it too.
Well, quiet moment.
I've got that one. But only got it. Did you find it or are you in somewhere else?
No, she just gave me the sheet.
Oh.
IT. I think two dozen.
We're just waiting for Charlie. To get a, she's getting you.
You just need the, I mean, I can just leave this one if it makes life easy, but.
Yeah, you bring it, bring it up if.
Yeah, I said, I don't know.
You have it memorized, good. Well, it's in, it's on his computer screen.
Uh, I can look at the, I don't mind. Be able to read that.
I can read that, it's fine.
All right, go ahead, sir.
All right, sorry about that. Um, well, for this year, I'm actually a little bit. Uh, well, for starters, um, the biggest highlight, I think, uh, for the upcoming fiscal year for my department is the addition of another staff member. Um, I at least put it down, so we're getting to a point now where we're, we're busy enough to where, uh, I, I feel like it's fully justified to be able to request this. Um, and basically the way I'm looking at it is this person being more of a, on the backend or infrastructure, so network side of things. Um, and doing that kind of in preparation of fiber coming on as well. Uh, to be able to get that person on board and be able to kinda get them familiar with what we have going on here in the city as far as network is concerned. And starting to get them prepared and ramped up for when we start having to do some of care for fi- the fiber department, starting out. Um, just getting that person in and getting them ready for that as well. Um. Uh, outside of that, I basically just looked at what we had going in, um, and did some more preparation for a couple more licenses that we were gonna need for, say like laser fishing, addition of a couple of projects we have going on there. Um, and we're talking about moving to a, an all-integrated ticketing type of system. So with that, we're gonna actually need licenses for everybody who's going to be responding to tickets. So I wanted to make sure that we had enough, uh, wiggle room to be able to get those, uh, licenses purchased for that.
Is the staff member you're looking at adding GIS, uh, tech support?
Tech, more tech support, network, more of a network specialist is really what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Then Mister Mayor, question real quick.
Yes.
Uh, Devonte, is all those other numbers, workers comp and Percy and all that, all factored in for a new additional employee? Or is that just what you have status quo right now?
That's a good question. Yes, it should have been, like, yeah, we talked about it earlier, so I'm pretty sure it was, but yes.
It's all factored in if you get one?
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mister Mayor?
Yep, Councilman Vaughn?
Uh, so Devonte on this one, so additional person, not a GIS, one of the things that as we've gone through the budget, we've identified on, I'll say multiple other budgets is a mapping component that, like, for water, I'm gonna use water as an example, water has twenty-five thousand dollars set aside for mapping that they've never used. Um, I think we've had a couple of other departments, um, the, my guess is Planning Department is gonna, if they haven't already, probably using a lot more. On this one, would we be, I guess, what's the best way to do that is if we, quite honestly, right now, Megan's being overused, um, if anything. Um, the GIS department really is, it's similar to IT, is a support function of all of the different, um, units or different off, or I don't know if I wanna call them, um.
I'm not trying to get in your brain, so.
You don't wanna be there, that's why, um, all the different, um, like Planning and zoning, water, all the different, uh.
Almost every department, like, same with us, like you said, it.
Right.
Touch, just touches everything as well.
And so on that one, do you, I mean, we talked about this capacity thing, do you think this is sufficient to look at us in the, in the future relative? Or are we taking into account, this is the one thing that we're running, um, we have several of the other, I don't wanna call them agencies, what do you wanna call them? Um, groups that have mapping identified in them, I'm just using mapping as an example.
Departments.
Thank you. Other departments have mapping integrated, can we take those funds and either one, either hire a person or do a contract to support at least the GIS function? Cause like, Megan right now is doing, we'll say ninety percent water, yet she's out of the IT budget, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Um, so how do we, I guess, offset that one? You've got one person that's basically predominantly doing one function, um, yet that, they're not paying one hundred percent of it or ninety percent of it that are paying, they're not paying any percent of it. Um, if we were to bring on another person, or can we put into the budget, a percentage of each one of the budgets for the departments goes towards GIS and IT? Would that be an easier way to do that?
Um, well, Councilman Vaughn, go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I was just gonna say is, what, what we found is the best thing is to let water put aside for that type of stuff and then we utilize our employees across. Because if you, if you don't have them in it, we can't really move it to IT because of, eh, eh, uh, enterprise fund.
Really?
Correct, so that way, we just need to move that money over towards, a- and the water department will pay the city to use her for the GIS, which is what we're moving towards.
Okay.
But the other departments don't have to do that, the other departments, we can rein it all into the IT budget.
Which is.
And have it just as another GIS person. Um, or we could break it out per departments, but this side, time, the se- sizes of the city is getting to the point where just, we found this with a lot of stuff that you just move it into the IT because of the cost of doing business.
Correct, that's, that's where we're going, so the other one is we'll have another enterprise fund, is theoretically with the fiber, we're gonna do the same thing. And the nice thing on this one is we'll be front-loading it, where a lot of that stuff will be coming in, so it won't be, but, so water, like I said, we've got, if you look past the last three years, we've got twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand, zero use, zero use, zero use. I'd like to, one, bump that up to offset basically to look at what's the legitimate amount of time or what legitimately should they be paying for that based on that timeframe? Um, and even going, like, we can't backtrack it, but looking at for planning purposes moving forward. Um, and then same thing with fiber, um, as we move forward and then a component of each one. Um, I just think the GIS and the, between GIS and IT, um, those are both where we're moving into. The fact that we're moving into a lot more electronic-based systems, a lot of the stuff that we've done historically, those are still growing, but this system, we're way behind and I think we gotta, we're playing catch-up now.
I concur. Um, what, what you said makes perfect sense, uh, it's also one of those things that, the thought had crossed my mind. Um, and we definitely are, I think, getting close to that threshold of where she can't do much more, I don't think, at this point, without having to add an addition, uh, add, adding additional personnel, at least one other person, um.
We, we've also talked about looking at an intern from one of the local colleges or schools, bring somebody up. Yeah.
Um, so even if we proposed going that route, like you said, starting with, there's a couple, there's a, what's the program, um?
CWI.
CWI is, right, uh, and getting in discussion with them and bringing, uh, a couple of interns in and kinda seeing how they work out with things. Um, we also looked at, uh, an internship program through, uh, second Meridian Tech or any other other tech schools in the local area that we can have some of the, you know, some of the youth come in and, uh, get them some experience, uh, help them gain a little bit of experience as well, just as a trial for that. So there's been a couple of things that have been, uh, we've definitely talked about and kinda juggled, but like I said, all, all means you absolutely correct in the sense, I think we do. We're at a point where I think we should be getting ready to maybe add somebody else or, like I said, look at some solutions or contract, something like that.
So, I guess, Mister Mayor, on that one, cause I think there's a lot of things right now, I guess, with just one, we're only using it for water, uh, eh, geez. Meg, um, for water, but as we come online, if we start, but, um, one thing we're identifying is the inventory for trails. That all is gonna have to be converted to a GIS system and that's just the trails we currently have. Um, all of that's gonna be converted into a GIS, a geospatial system. Um, if and when we start expanding in the foothills, all of that will, uh, a lot of the infrastructure for not only, we've got the fiber, we've got the water. Um, now for the emergency response plans, all of that has to be submitted in GIS, geospatial format. Um, I just, yeah, I see, we're, we're just starting and I think what we've finally done is kinda opened the door and we're exponentially increasing the use on, IT and GIS are gonna go up quite a bit.
I agree.
Yeah.
Any more questions, comments, concerns?
Mister Mayor?
Yep, Councilmember Gendisfer.
Devonte, what is the website development that's in the budget this year that isn't for the last two?
Um, that was actually for the, um, we just had the revamp for the website.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we do have an annual fee that goes along with it. So the last year, I think we ended up, uh, I have to look and see it, I don't have enough for me now, but that funding for the last year, that should be. And the funding on it now is in preparation for the funding we should have actually paid last year. Um, we do it, uh, we have a four-year contract and they just revamped it, so.
Okay.
Getting ready to roll into the new one, so this is in anticipation of that.
Okay, so there, this is the line item, probably shows up every four years.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha, thank you.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Vaughn.
Question on that one, relative to the website, the PIO, you guys have PIO. Would that fall, I mean, would it, rather than IT, would the website potentially fun- fall under the PIO and that would be under the executive?
So we don't, everything that has to do with technology goes through IT.
That's.
And then the PIO is under the executive, but not the stuff that she uses to do, yeah.
Right.
Funding is IT, but the personnel, not me.
Right, cause IT is once again, one of those things that touches every department and the website touches every department, so it shouldn't be, yeah.
Mister Mayor, good question.
Councilman Pike?
Thanks. Uh, Devonte, on, um, correlating with other agencies, especially emergency services, um, Charlie brought a good point. Do we, the GIS, do we look at that from, uh, with the, uh, overlapping from, uh, dispatch, uh, fire and police and, and, uh, utilizing their GIS stuff to help us, eh, can we augment it with support with each other or where are we at with that? Or do we have to do it all, all on our own?
Uh, Councilman Pike, so in a situation like that, we do have some information, working with them is one hundred percent possible. Um, Megan has actually done a really good job of reaching out to the local GIS community and kind of getting her feel- feelers out there and, uh, basically pooling all the information that was available, that's been available to her, she's done a pretty good job of reaching out for that.
Especially if we don't have to do redundancy and her finding all of her stuff on her own and we have it all ready for the county and, and the public safety all has it ready to go. I mean.
Right.
To help her.
Yeah, she's done a pretty good job of reaching out and grabbing all that information, um.
Cool.
Well, I'm, I'm fairly confident she actually has already done, the first, in the first couple of months she was here, she actually, that was one of the first things she did was, hi, I'm new, basically, and, uh, I'd appreciate it if I can get any information you have on the local area I'm in.
I hate just to have something not connected and we go, oh, she just did a bunch of work, she could have got it.
Oh, right, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks.
Mister Mayor, just to answer that, yeah, so she, she already reached out to Ada County, Ada County, uh, Emergency Response Plan, already has all of their spatial, geospatial data. Um, Intera, Wildland Fire, all those, um, she's already attached to them and gotten most of that data, so she's definitely integrated in that. But we, as we move forward, a lot of those plans is now we're gonna have to start supplying information to them as well, so. But yeah, no, she's full on, uh, she's done a really good job over the first year.
My last question, Mister Mayor?
Yep, Councilman Pike?
Do you need eight, eight hundred dollars for uniforms? I'm gonna ask every department, so.
Um, so typically with us, I mean, even I still get crawl under desks and stuff like that, so those things do get dirty. Um, and just sometimes we have to do public-facing things, so, uh, I usually add a little bit for everybody each year. But the price of the shirts and stuff seem to be going up as well, so that's the reason I did request it.
Okay, and how many, how many shirts do you usually get?
I usually do about three myself a year. Um, and then I think everybody else does that, or.
When you say everybody else, give me a number of, uh, employees it's.
It's four of us total right now.
Yeah, four.
And so I also added that eight in anticipation of adding an additional employee, so.
I mean, eight hundred is not that bad, but some of the other numbers are a little bit off, but, I mean, I, I'm, I'm trying to find.
Oh, I agree.
I've got a method to my madness, but we'll discuss that all later with the budgeting stuff. I've got a method to my madness, but we'll discuss that all later with the budgeting stuff, but, um, the reason I'm asking, so, I'm just curious for every department head, what the reason is, you know, is it arbitrary number, or is it specific to the need?
I, I looked at it as specific to the need, just making sure everybody had enough, or like I said, any public-facing events that we have. Um, and so, something else to add to, it's not really a uniform, but our daily wear.
Yeah.
What we wear during the day, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I like, so I'd put, the uniforms are, I think, actually really good, so we, so in the guard position that we have, we're the civilian population, where everybody else has a uniform. Um, I wish we, under state contracting, we can't buy uniforms, we'd have to buy them ourselves. Um, but my entire department would love to have uniforms, cause one, it looks like, it, it looks professional, um, it looks, and I, you know, for the amount, uh, relative to the benefit. I think a lot of these are, now, the fifteen thousand, I know exactly where you're going with that one, um, that was when you got that, but, uh, relative to the amount, ninety to a hundred dollars per person per year is pretty good for, uh.
Yeah, and I, I, you weren't here last week, you heard me, but talk about the definition of uniforms and stuff. And I'm all for either we mandate for the whole, all department has a department shirts in color of their own, or we keep a volunteer, and if we keep a volunteer, then it becomes something that can't be mandated through a budget. So, we need to make a decision there somewhere, and like I said, um, I've got other desires that I'd like to see put back from the general fund into other budget areas. But, uh, we're up to thirty-one thousand dollars so far in, in uniforms, and I, I just wanna get my head around it, and right now I can't.
But that was including the sports stuff, right, the fifteen thousand for that?
Yeah, but you still take away, we're way over, I mean, I, I'm not ready to get into the discussion with that, but we're, we're exceeding the number of, um, I, I'm, and I'm giving you, this is basic polo shirts and T-shirts, this isn't No-Mex Fire and, you know, two hundred dollar uniforms. Or military uniforms, but, yeah, we, we could just be more, um, concise and precise on the numbers that we're looking at, and I think the citizens deserve it. And I'm gonna be a little stickler on a couple of things, so.
Totally understandable, um, also with that, I think part of it is with the new logo change as well. Um, a lot of the shirts that we wore, some people still wear them, are having circulation, which is perfectly fine. But I do have some staff members that don't quite have that, so at least getting them up to speed on some of that stuff, I think would be important.
Yeah, and I'm not putting pressure on you, I'm just asking for the numbers, yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, for the next forty-five minutes, we have the Public Works Department.
Okay. Karen covered the whole podium of paperwork here. Okay. Mayor and council, some of the big changes in the, uh, Public Works Department budget, I guess, uh, to start off with, is that we, um, try and budget for any situation that we can that might arise in a fiscal year. So, some of these things are more of a reactive, for just in case repairs that we might run into. Uh, some of the additions that we've had to the budget are obviously the Jackson House. We've prepared for additional trails that are headed our way, Nicole will talk about it here in the next, but we're also discussing the sports complex, which will be later on in the fiscal year, uh, and also seven-day-a-week coverage, as far as in our parks. The reason for the seven-day-a-week coverage is to, um, help with safety concerns that we've seen in this last fiscal year, and also increase our service, uh, that, in the parks that we can offer to our citizens, and also cover the increased use. Uh, obviously with the population that's increasing, the weekends that are here year-round, and also during the week, that we almost need two personnel to cover, garbages, um, small repairs, and also just other miscellaneous things that come up during the week. Um, one of the biggest changes, obviously, is personnel, with the added, I guess, facilities and things, and also some of the attention that we need to give, uh, the landscape side of things, we're finding that some of our, uh, personal gardening, if you will, as far as in small planners and areas like that, that are needing some attention. Uh, some of the areas that we've acquired are not just commercial, if you will, landscaping, that there is a lot of handwork and things that, um, are needed in that, so we are in need of a person to come and basically give those individual attention. Also in the trails, I guess we budgeted for an additional person for trails that will be added for the next fiscal year, if they are completed. Also with the seven-day coverage, as far as in the parks, we've asked, uh, or requested, I guess, for an additional park personnel to help cover with, uh, seven-day-a-week. I, I keep repeating that, and also in the facilities, to help out with, uh, the community center, as far as breaking down, setting up in there, also cleaning needs. We have found that between the museum, the library, seven-day, seven-day-a-week coverage with the library, on top of the museum on the weekends, and then the additional coverage in the community center, and planning for the additional usage for the Jackson House for the next fiscal year, that we would like to add another personnel there. Also increasing, in this next year, we were notified by Idaho Power for utilities, that will have an eleven percent increase for all of our facilities, so that was increased there. Also Intermountain Gas is, uh, requesting a nine percent increase there, so we did budget for that. Obviously, we've all felt in our personal lives, the increase as far as in fuel, uh, we have forty-three pieces of equipment that we maintain and keep running down the road, as far as this here at the city, so we increased the fuel cost for, for that. And also, um, we, we increased, last year, we also increased the, uh, budget, increased the fleet, I'm sorry, by three vehicles that are operated daily. Moving on to, uh, Public Works Projects, we listed those out here, um, one of the things in the facilities is, is, uh, years ago, we did a small, uh, it was a small facelift at City Hall, and during that project, we replaced all of the carpet throughout, um, the existing, not the expanded, obviously. But we never did council chambers, and it is, uh, different from everything else in City Hall, this is the original carpet. If I'm not mistaken, as far as in here, it was requested for that to either get replaced, or so that way it would match everything else. Parks, uh, we can go through these real quick, Pamela Baker Park and Linda Road, the floor, it wasn't epoxy during, uh, construction, to save, cost during that process, and so we can get it done cheaper after the fact, we wanted to add that for easier cleaning for staff. Oak Park, there's some bollards that have electrical that's in the ground, that is not operational anymore, that we need to remove and cap off. Friendship Park, wanted to remove and replace a block wall that is leaning, it is in between the elementary school and the park, it is starting, the, bricks that are in the ground are starting to give way, and they're rotted just from over years of erosion, and replace it with a chain link fence. Uh, where am I at Flag Park, we wanted to update that with, uh, new trash cans and benches, they're original to that park there, so just give it a more updated look. Dog Park entrances, we needed to be expanded and bricked to match, we did the entryways that are there, but we've seen that the patrons that use that park regularly, the entrances and exits, if you will, uh, need to be expanded outside of the fence, and it's been, I guess, a, a complaint of the patrons, because of the mud and things that their dogs pick up entering and exiting, so we put that in there. Dog Park trash cans, we wanted to put an additional project in there, uh, they're quite expensive, we wanted to add them to the entrances and exits there too, instead of the little small poo bag disposal ones and actual full-size garbage cans. Uh, we've seen, uh, some major scalding this year at Gerber Park, as far as in the entrances into the shelters and things and the concrete. There's also some heaving, that are some trip hazards, uh, over in Gerber Park, so we put in for some sidewalk repair. Merrill Park Playground Fence is original to that park, when we did the remodel there, the fence wasn't replaced, it was actually, parts of it were removed. And we've seen that the feet are rotted off, I guess they're rusted through, so that fencing is starting to give way. Uh, we've rewelded it, we've tried to patch it, paint it, they're just something that needs to be more of a permanent, uh, repair there, rather than just us kinda band-aiding it. Bike Park retaining wall, there's a, uh, by the pump track, there's a retaining wall that has given way, just from over the years, uh, there's just use and age. And because of the construction costs, as we all know, construction right now and materials are just kinda all over the place, and with these, so we added an additional ninety-two hundred dollars, which is just rounding up for round figures of this, to kinda cover either way of however those small projects would go. Uh, landscaping, I guess, with, uh, the preparation of the sports complex, with landscaping side of personnel, and also if the, sports complex is completed later in the fiscal year, we've put in also, we're gonna need some equipment for that, some trailers and everything, in the, in the landscaping side of that to take care of that, and some additional things that could be funded through ARPA and your list. Um, other than that, I guess, as a preemptive strike to Councilman Pike, uniforms, uh.
Let, let me interject before you go there.
Okay.
Because I wanna cut, I wanna, put you at ease, uh, on, on the concerns with that, because how many employees do you have on that, Mr. Mayor, if I could continue, I don't know if.
Councilman Pike, yep.
Yeah, sorry, um, how many employees do you have right now?
Councilman Pike, if, uh, the approved personnel, I guess, is approved, we'll have twenty-four full-time employees and seven seasonal.
And the reason I'm asking that is because I think your budget for uniforms is actually low, um, and I'll, I'll tell you why. Um, OSHA compliance for one, steel toes, steel shank boots, um, helmets, goggles, ear, ear safe protection, um, chaps, if you have to do chainsaw work, um, all of those factors come in to play long sleeves for sun exposure. Um, the guys, the people that are out there doing the labor part of everything, they have to, it has to fall under OSHA, i- in the requirements and stuff, so. When I, when you put fifty-five hundred, I thought, knowing the number of staff that you had, and I wanted you to reiterate that for public knowledge, is, um, I actually see your department as maybe a little bit low, knowing how much boots cost and having, uh, a backup pair, and then all the safety provisions that are required by OSHA that your department has to do. Um, I, I would, um, think that you're actually on a little bit of a low side on that, um, knowing what I know about, um, that world. Um, so I just wanted to put you at ease on, on that, um, the, the, the staff indoors, um, your position and other things with the, uh, polo shirts and stuff, uh, I just, I know there's a lot of people that need, um, special, um, and I'm glad you put safety clothing, there next to your uniforms and safety clothing, that was important to see that, so, um, enough kudos for now, but you can, that, that's my position on that, before you had to wo- wonder about all the compliance part of it.
I guess to elaborate a little bit more for you, Councilman Pike, um, I, I can't take all the kudos, Tracy actually has helped out quite a little bit with this, and, and Kelly. Uh, we've gone to a uniform shirt, that, that's an orange, high-visibility shirt for all of Public Works. Um, we kinda joke in the department, so that way, you know, they can see us as we go through the windshield, you know, kind of a thing, but, we wanna be noticed in the parks, you know, and, uh, that way, if we're on a piece of machinery or something like that, you know, we wanna be noticed. And the thing of it is, is also with the park coverage, and if there's an issue, or if there is a patron that's trying to find a, a city worker, you know, that way, that way we can see it. Um, we have gone to a uniform shirt with everyone, in years past, we've had like hoodies, and everyone has kinda had a, you know, more of a choice in it, but it just got too expensive, so we just went to, you get a long-sleeve, orange embroidered shirt, and some short-sleeve ones, and a zip-up, uh, zip-up jacket. Boots, you commented on that, we give them a hundred dollars a year to go towards a set of boots, and then once they wear them out, and they, they come back. Uh, jackets have kinda been a thing, uh, we, we, we try and have a little hardier jacket in the wintertime, obviously we're moving snow and things like that, we want guys to be safe and comfortable, so.
What type of gloves do you require for your?
So, usually staff goes through about two sets of gloves, um, and, uh, trails, they go through gloves like crazy, I mean, obviously they're trimming and cutting and things, so, uh, we do work gloves, obviously anything that's full-fingered, all that in the, in the summertime, not insulated, obviously, so. Some of them like mechanic gloves, something that's padded in the wintertime, obviously, and insulated kinda work glove. Um, some, it's kind of up to the technician and what they like, some of them like the, the deer skin, some of them like, you know, the insulated, so we kinda leave it up to staff.
Well, that's my, my reasons, Mr. Mayor, on that, I think, or just a little, I think you're a little short because of all the compliance parts of it, so. I wouldn't be opposed if you, but I like more of a line item, um, direction of, like you said, the boots, and there's no cost to the, the employee though, right? I mean, like, it's, you can be three hundred dollar boots, um, if they want that, do they get it, and then they have to offset the cost of it, or how does that work?
Uh, Councilman Pike, so we give them up to a hundred dollars, so if they, if they buy a three hundred dollar set of boots, we give them a hundred bucks towards it, and they cover the other two hundred. Um, staff has found that they, they make the initial investment for a good pair of, uh, Red Wing boots.
Red Wings.
And then, uh, they'll get them resold and dipped and all that for about a hundred bucks, and they, and they wear those for years on end.
I just didn't want, on the record, I just didn't wanna be so known as a uniform Nazi on this stuff, when it, it has to be relevant to the department needs, so you have a need.
Yeah, um, and also out of that same, you know, I mean, we, we, we take it out of other areas, but also we cover like high-visibility vests, I mean, kind of all those things as, as going on.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bond?
All right, it's good expenditures, uh, training.
Yes.
You guys have one of the highest training expenses, what, when you guys do training, what training are you doing?
We, Councilman Bond, so some training that we have, obviously, we have, uh, staff members that are backflow preventer certified. They have to go, obviously, for continuing ed- training for that, also we have staff that, um, does spray applicator, so they do continuing education, also for Arbor, I'm sorry, uh, to become an arborist, obviously there's fall training, uh, we do, uh, danger assessments for trees, all that stuff. Uh, also, we do a thing called Safety Fest, uh, that the state puts on, so staff likes to go to that, and does your ten-hour OSHA certification, all those things on a, on a upper management, if you will, there's Park Management School that we go to, that kinda gives us, kinda updated practices on how to maintain cities, and what bigger cities see, what's coming our way and trends and things like that, so, um, those are just some of the things that we maintain and also send staff to.
Playground, certainly.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, uh, uh, CPSI, we also have staff that has to have that renewed, so, we're, we're hoping that this year, NAPA is hosting that, so we don't have to pay for travel, so those are three-year certifications, so we try and keep that training cost just kinda uniform, um, to, for, for everyone, so there, there's a wide array.
Me, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Uh, follow-up, sidewalks, trees, so we have a hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, and we, twenty thousand one year, is that just a, a line item you put in there as a placeholder all the time?
Councilman Bond, yes, uh, that is just in case, we had a situation about three years ago, that we had a drunk driver come through, and take out about four, four trees and about three streetlights, and it's in case of just kind of an umbrella to cover anything that, that goes along with that. Streetlights are expensive, street trees are, are, are expensive also, and it's just anything to kinda cover that.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor on this one, uh, one more, uh, so salaries on this one, uh, it says sixty-two percent increase, but it looks like quite a bit more. Um, so you're almost doing a, almost quite doubling the salaries, is it, so you're getting that many new people, or is that offset for?
Councilman Bond, it, we are, we are getting not that many new people, I guess, with it, that we have.
Everybody's rates are going up that much, and, good.
It is a, it is combined, because, uh, um, we have found it's, it's hard to hire someone to clean public bathrooms at thirteen bucks an hour, so, um, we've had to increase some things and offset some costs, and also new staff that, um, is proposed to come on. Uh, I, I would like to say to, uh, Mayor and Council that, obviously some of this staff is in completion of projects. Um, and so we'll have that funding in place, I guess, when those projects are completed, if none of them are completed, that we will, we'll have to reevaluate that.
Right, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Councilman Buck.
I also just wanna point out, basically the number of staff that you have within this department is significantly more than any other department, so, between that. Um, shop lease. So we are still paying, even with the new agreement, we do have a shop lease amount that we're putting into that, or was that our interim fix was we didn't have a shop lease anymore?
Uh, Councilman Bond, so we are in, I guess, we have agreements put in place with, uh, Spring Valley, I guess, for using their shop, and as of right now. Uh, we, we don't have the staff capacity at the moment, just with what we have everything to deal with, to move out of our existing shop. And we're hoping by the end of fiscal year, somewhere in there, we'll be able to move out of there and, uh, not pay that shop lease anymore. Uh, but it's just kind of a timing thing, there's some improvements that need to be made on that shop property to get those done, so that way it'll be safer operation. And then that will, that will go away, we are also put funding in for Spring Valley Shop, also some improvements out there for utilities and things like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Where was that, that was what I was looking for, cause I wanted to see. I wanted to see, a big number on that one, cause that takes care of our, theoretically, uh, with the Spring Valley up there, that can take care of at least a big jump for the, the shop area.
Correct. Hi, uh, Councilman Bond, if you go down to the bottom to where it says new on page number seven. Spring Valley Regional Sports Complex Shop.
We got Capitol Projects.
Page six.
Wow, six.
Page six, the bar.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have it, I have it as page seven.
So, you only, we only have ten thousand.
So, you only, we only have ten thousand dollars budgeted for that?
That's what we have for that shop space out there.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we have that budget in the capital improvement plan for like an actual shop complex and everything, or what's our long-term plan for that?
Yeah, so where we are going now, temporary, it's a temporary spot, those will eventually be either moved or taken down, cause they certainly don't fit our architectural design and stuff that we would have, so what we have done is we've put ten thousand dollars from fiber, water, and the city towards whatever we need out there for a temporary fix, because they all will be used by all three facilities. Um, and then we don't, the, the shop is the four hundred thousand we have in impact fees right now, um, that will be when we find a permanent structure. But we don't have a permanent place, cause where that, all the buildings are and the houses and everything will, will be right in the middle of the sports complex. So, we're gonna have to figure out if we wanna move some of those facilities and where we move them to, and then if, what we need to do to church them up to make them fit equals, uh, design review standards.
Good, thanks.
Can I get one question?
Yep, Councilman Pike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Eric, on the, um, senior center, I thought we were gonna do the flooring and everything, are we gonna collaborate efforts with somebody else? We got twenty-five hundred bucks, is that all it's gonna take for, are we, for next, this, this next fiscal year, we were talking about the flooring and the paint and everything like that?
Uh, I'll check with Nicole, I believe some of that is in the capital plan, Councilman Pike?
Yeah, I thought, I mean, yeah, I thought, yeah, exactly, I thought it was, but the twenty-five hundred, I don't know what, what they're gonna get out of that.
So, I believe the, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor and Council, the, the twenty-five hundred, it would just be what you're doing to just function in that facility. Um, you do have a senior center remodel, but it did not make the capital plan for next fiscal year.
Right, right.
Um, because we do not have a matching partner, which was the direction of the council, is upon finding that matching partner, we can bring it up into the capital maintenance, uh, fund, but at this point in time, it is not programmed for next fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, my question then would be that flooring, was it already, but, we already, the financing for the redoing of the flooring, or because it didn't qualify, the CIP, it's gonna be delayed? Okay, I need to make sure we complete that to, yeah.
That is correct, Councilman Pike. The twenty-five hundred is for, um, repairs, I guess, for anything with the senior center that might come our way.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thanks, sir, appreciate it. All right, item six is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Question, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We should do a roll call one time, just to.